You let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, it'll just be a second. I'm make sure everything is doing there properly. I think that's also.
We set a speed.
I had brag about that to Deborah.
You reached her in the key was?
Well, I sent an email and I haven't heard back yet, so.
Sorry, I can't. I'm a little slow. You get in here and then I will be also. Just bring in my notes. Maybe.
There weren't people around three ten. Thinking course handles. I don't know.
You've got to count the bird.
Or either that or get D C to sign off.
You know, there were some other news.
Gotta wait him out, remember.
No.
Speaking of that, they're gonna all that sense.
Oh.
They're gonna use up all three times. Bag fans, you can offer six inches.
I don't know why they don't just use stuff that has bigger squares at the top, but it's over.
That's what they're gonna do.
That's what they're gonna do on.
We'll talk about that.
Yes.
And do you have the did, I I didn't get a chance to print out the public hearing announcement, but I can read it from here unless didn't did my print it. Okay. So we're also, I just wanted to make sure. We're good. So you.
You wanna read it or you want me to?
I don't care. I'm happy to read anything you ask me to, but that's up to you.
I might have you do it.
Okay. So I'm ready whenever you want to start.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. This is a public hearing for the solar project that twenty two Nickerson Road in Canton. Let's see, we've got the attendance. We'll introduce the board, planning board members. I'm Ian McKeller.
I'm Bill Myers.
Eric Barr.
Vicky Barr.
Let's see, Hodge.
John Casserly.
And Dakota Casserly is up there. You wanna read that?
Sure.
I'll get enough for tonight.
So this is the legal notice published in the paper. It says, please take notice that the Canton Town Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, commencing at six P M. To receive public comment for a special use permit request. The request is to open a proposed solar project located at twenty two Nickerson Road, Canton, New York, one, three, six, one, seven. The public hearing and following regular meeting of the planning board will be held in the boardroom of the municipal building located at sixty Main Street, Canton, New York, one through six, one, seven. Public comments may also be submitted via email address to Chairperson Ian McKeller at townplanning@canonny.gov. Or by regular mail address to the chairperson at sixty Main Street, Canton, New York, one, three, six, one, seven, to be received by five P M today. And such public comments will be made part of the record of the meeting. A regular meeting of the Canton Town Planning Board is scheduled to commence immediately following the preceding public hearing, at which time the board will consider and may take action on the proposed project. And that's dated January tenth.
Perfect. Are you folks ready to give an overview of the project?
Uh, yeah, so the project of construction of a five megawatt solar facility, which consists of a fixed rack system. Uh, social electrical equipment, including transformers, inverters, switchboards, utility poles, and access road, perimeter fencing, and landscaping. Uh, the P V panels will be east, west tilting, power fed wire from the panel rolls to the electrical pad location. Will be installed below grade. Underground conduit from these pads will run to utility poles under the plate country. Above ground wires will connect these utility poles to existing utility poles along the road. Uh, spacing of the rows of the array are sufficient to allow for routine mowing approximately three to four times during the growing season. And the site will be restored upon completion of construction to a metal like condition, with the exception of the previous travel road. Uh, paved driveway entrance and the concrete pavement path located on site. Existing trees and shrubs on the perimeter of the site will be maintained prior to barrier screen. And landscaping that is proposed would also be maintained during operation. Uh, the subject that site is approximately twenty seven and a half acres.
Uh, so, yeah, the installation that's being proposed here will be your community solar projects. I think the board is familiar with community solar, correct?
The public attendees might not be.
So, um, my name is Christian. I'm with Portland Power and the project manager for the developers. So community solar is, um. So this installation will be connected directly to the utilities grid. It'll feed their substation. And then subscriptions, the local community can subscribe, residents and and businesses can subscribe into the production of the electricity and save money on their electric bill. So there's opportunity for the the local residents to save money as well. If they choose to subscribe. That's all.
Okay, thanks. Do we need to introduce the folks on Zoom? Is Bill on there now?
Bill Buchanan is up there, so is Kayla Kipling.
And can you see them to?
I, it's okay. So on Zoom, just real quick to introduce everyone. Uh, Marion Ashley, supervisor, but she's also, I think, just participating as part of the public tonight. Um, Kayla Kipling, uh, is our engineer from, uh, B and L Barton and La Judas. She, they're contracted with the town. Bill Buchanan is, um, solar lawyer contracted with the town. Um, is that John? Okay, I can't tell. John Candino from B and L, um, is also on Zoom. And then Dakota Casserly seems to be having trouble with this connection. He just jumped back on. He has an alternate on the board.
Perfect. Are there any specific questions from the public for the project developers before we start the, uh, public hearing? The purpose of the public hearing is to allow residents in the township of Canton to voice their opinion about the project to the planning board. There are some procedures and guidelines that we would ask you to abide by if you want to speak. I give your full name and address, uh, the company representative, if it's applicable. An opinion for the record. You present to the board, not to the rest of the public. Limit, please limit your presentation of opinion to a maximum of three minutes. Only one person at a time may speak. Light the comments will be accepted in writing to the board until January twenty fourth at five P M. And the last thing is, uh, for fairness, we would ask that everybody got to speak once before anybody spoke a second time. Uh, is there anyone who would like to, uh?
I have a question. Sure. So I live with my father. My mailing address is two fifty Pike Road. My home is seventeen fifty nine County Route twenty five, which borders up against this project. Will this devalue my property? Being right outside my door of my home.
I don't think so. It hasn't been shown in places where they've gone back to.
So if I were to put my house up for sale, I can get what I have into it. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's no guarantee.
No, well.
But it wouldn't be because of the solar array. Some people like.
I had a, may speak.
Sure.
A project up the road from my house on Littleville Road, one twenty six Littleville Road, uh, installed two community solar projects of five megawatts and five megawatts. A house, a house across from that project sold for two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
Right across the road from it.
Right across the road from it.
Yeah, but what was the house worth?
Wasn't worth two hundred and eighty five thousand. It was a double wide. Double wide on the full basement with two stall garage. Two acres. So the answer to your question, that question has been proposed by a lot of people and it's it's all over the board.
So it could have devalued his property.
Could, it might not. It's right now it's buyer's market.
We have ten years down the road. If somebody wants to sell a house. And you say it doesn't devalue it, but what if somebody doesn't even put an offer in because of where it is and says, oh, I'm not even interested in that house, let alone? Well, you might not or get, you might get or not get.
It's a, and it's an impossible thing for us to say at this point. And and we can't make our decision totally based on that. We have to abide by the solar law that the town of Canton has. And we, the, there's a whole bunch of hoops that the company has to jump through to get approval from the D E C and Highway Department and the school district. And if they do everything that they're supposed to, then we we have to, uh, go by that. Our job is to protect the people in the town of Canton. Make sure that all of the, all of the correct things happen.
So my taxes will go down then, right?
I can't guarantee it, but it's a possibility. They're going to be putting money into the school district and the town and the county.
But if the value of his house goes down, if it goes up, well, good for him because you're saying that some people really enjoy living next to a solar array, but if the value of his house goes down, then that's just too bad. That's, that's part of, that's part of.
We have control over them.
There, there's so many variables that go into it. You know, one of the things that's driving property values up is the ability for for people to lease their land to solar companies. I mean, that, you know, there's, it's not something that we're going to be able to answer, you know, here tonight. Um, you know, there's just so many variables to go into property values. Um, you know, what you do with your property once you've purchased it. You know, can influence whether your property value goes up or down. It'd be ridiculous for us to say, you know, that your property value is going to go up or down. We have no idea what you're going to do with that property. What we've seen is that when, and there's been studies presented in here, um, you know, that that show that it's not moving property values as far as home values significantly one direction or another.
Bill, would you like to comment on this issue at all?
We appreciate the comment. But there's nothing in town law or solar law or any of the things that guide the planning board's actions. To approve or disprove. That address this question. It's we appreciate the comment. But there's no action for the board to take with respect to this question.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to, uh, address the board?
What's, um, what's the E M S or the reflectivity, the emissivity of the, the, uh? And
there's a significant, um, glare study that they have to do and has been done that to show that, uh, it won't cause glare impact. You want to address that at all?
There's a, there's an anti glare coating placed on the glass.
East, west configuration, forty five degrees.
This is fixed, right?
So it's fixed. They're not thermal motor.
No, we're.
We're tilting. So, yeah, east, west. Single, single access, um, yeah, one, one, one angle.
But they, they had the study done to show that there would not be any glare impact. And if there is, and people have a problem after the fact, they, people can complain to the town and the solar company has to fix it.
That's in the resolution.
That's in, in our resolution at the end. If we approve this, it's right in like the resolution and contract that they have to agree to.
Fix it how?
Be sure to have people identify themselves.
Um, yes, it's just a point of order. Oh, okay. Yeah. When, if you're gonna speak, please, please say who you are.
John Bailey. Fix it how?
They would have to make it so that it does not cause further glare.
Right. And how is that done?
I don't know how it's done technically.
It depends on what the impact is. I, I mean, it's all hypothetical right now.
What are some options?
I mean, if it's, you know, if it's a something, someone standing on the ground on a property, let's say, I mean, there could be some landscape buffer placed that would block that glare to that particular location. That's just the, the example.
I'm seeing in that, um, solar. You know, this right in my backyard. So I live in the country and the open in the woods and all the, um, because I, if I wanted to live next to industrial or any of that, I would have lived in the villages somewhere else like that, but I enjoy my outdoors and the animals and freedom to be out there. And honestly, I spent most of my, I spent quite a few like a year and a half enjoying it more when I I went through chemo and to be able to sit out back in my backyard and face that was healing for me. And I just think about that being in my backyard and that glare is going to be coming to my backyard. The way these are going to be focused because of where I locate, uh, where my property is located. And, um, I'm.
Are you right on Nickerson Road?
Yes. And
she's. Manage it with a property.
Yeah, Derek's property is right there. We're that's where it's gonna be. It's right in my backyard.
And it even looks like John Bailey. It even looks like an entrance is going right down, I mean, on her line. So her house and and the line, if that's what the map shows, that's going to be in one of the entrances.
Well, there's one entrance and it's not next to anybody's line.
There'll be something next to somebody's line.
Yeah, it's in the middle of the property.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, they are gonna put trees all around.
Is this county or?
When just Nickerson Road.
Got it.
And the, and the entrance will be here. And I assume this must be Sanders. This is your property?
No.
No. That's Jody's. I'm right here. And this road, there's a road that goes right here and that's, this is.
Oh, it's an existing.
It's an, this is existing, but that's not what they're going to use.
Okay, so they're gonna go down here, but either way, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the access road has been controversial for them.
Right.
If you looked at the.
We've got, we've got big images. Yeah.
They don't show.
But they showed.
You can see that access road.
With a set of plans like that, you didn't need to have a meeting. This is already going through. Right?
No, they have to, they have to provide all of this stuff before they. No, they have to, they have to provide all of this stuff before they even get this far. There's a lot of hoops they have to jump through. And this would be, I think, the drive next year's that you're talking about.
All right, yeah, cuz I'm right here, and that's, this is where, in my backyard.
This is a simulation of where it would be. And then they're going to be putting in trees.
And all the deer and everything, yeah.
What kind of trees are in there?
Do you know what kind of trees there were? Can you use white spruce instead of balsam birds? Deer love balsams.
The mature height of, of, and availability and spacing, so it's might look a little bit different.
The deer will strip them up to six feet.
And and does that as, as the years go by, are those trees replaced as they die?
Yes, that's in the, in the contract. They have to be inspected annually. And, and uh by a certified arborist. Um, and if there's any that are not doing well or die, they have to be replaced at the expense of this solar company.
For, if the solar company is still instilled in contact and and all, if they're still viable. Then what's the plan if they're not?
There, wow, there, there's all kinds of things in, in there. If, if there's a resolution, you would hear some of these things, but there's a decommissioning plan, that essentially they have to put money upon in for, um, it would be there. Um, and um, also, there's, there's requirements in the contracts that if this goes to another company, that those companies have to abide by the original contract for these types of.
Is there any, um, are you using any of the industrial or brownfield places, anything like that, foot, that is just sitting there, can any of those be used for these solar fields, so that you're not taking the agricultural land in the room?
We don't have any say on that. Our, our job tonight is to deal with this project in this location. Um, it's one of several in the town of Canton. And uh the projects are, uh, some of them have already been approved, uh. It depends on the location, but the, the solar companies and the landowners come to an agreement before we hear anything about it.
I got a question I'd like to ask. I'm.
Who are you?
Ken Gibson.
Oh, okay.
Have property right next to the field. Is the developer bonded for this? And to go along with the bonding, and in five years these panels are done for ten years, for fifteen years, who cleans up the mess? It's not gonna be the landowner.
Or no.
Cause he's gonna walk away from it.
But do you know how much they put up for these?
The bond resolution, well the bond resolution is a hundred and twenty-five percent of the hundred and twenty-five percent of the decommissioning with a two percent escalator every year. When, isn't that right, Bill? There, there will be a bond held by the town sufficient amount to remove the equipment, decommission the site, and return it back to agricultural use. This is a bond payable to the town in the event that the developer no longer exists. Or if the system gets destroyed and insurance doesn't allow for it to be rebuilt. So there is a very robust mechanism for making sure we don't have derelict systems in the town.
What happens if the bonding company goes belly up? Who's hauling the money?
Town holds, town holds the bond.
Yeah, you hold the bond, but who's gonna pay on it? Bonding companies fail.
There will be a bond. A legal bond, an obligation.
Not in your lifetime, it won't be.
I disagree.
They're on hook for a lot of money. Are there any other comments or questions?
John Bailey, um, you spoke about, a little bit about wildlife. What, what is being done to protect or preserve the, the space, that space is being used for wildlife? And you can, and you can, people I know will struck and say, well, Canadian geese, we've got enough of those, but they are still protected federally. At the state level, and you can go by there anytime almost during the year, and there's three or four hundred of them literally in that field and across the road on that other, on that other field. Um, there are, there's at least one nesting pair of blue herons uh that use that waterway, which is, it's a seasonal waterway, but it runs pretty good down through there most of the year. Right down across the county route and out into the little river. Um, what, what's gonna be done? Cause you're, you're, you're removing all that, I mean, so what's, what's, how do you deal with that?
Do you wanna address any of that?
Well, I mean, as far as geese are concerned, there's still available space if they choose to go in and out of that area. Um, it's not as though it's, it's occupying a hundred percent, percent of the acreage, you know, there's, these will be set on piles that are you know, the bottom edge of the solar panel will typically be a minimum three feet off the ground. And so there's, they, they still can have access in and out of that space, the waterway you're talking about, is that the one that's outside of the fence or? And I haven't seen the fence during, yeah. As a result of this, this project, if I'm understanding.
This is the stream, right, the extreme limit of their, this is their fence. And they'll have screening plantings between the fence and the stream. They have requirements, how far away from uh wetlands that they're required to be.
And how far is that?
It's over a hundred feet.
I, I, I'm assuming these contour lines are wetlands? Or is that?
This, this is a, is a wetland. And the stream is a wetland, and there's a couple of little spots that are, you know, unreg- unregulated wetlands.
Well, this is, they're taking the under Bartlett, twenty-seven and a half acres. That's that whole, the whole field behind my house, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that was all deer, turkeys, everything, so that's all gonna be gone, they're not gonna hang around there. And that's, um, I also have a question about what hazardous components are in these solar panels? And that, I know there's lead and stuff, and it's gonna seep down into there, which I know underground water travels, it goes into the water system, I worked in environmental stuff, and I know that some people's wells and things got um contaminated.
From solar panels?
From hazardous items seeping into the ground and traveling under the groundwater.
From what source?
Can they degrade over time?
Yeah, or if they're damaged in hail, whatever.
Right.
There's, there's no lead in the, in the panels.
I, there's not, cuz I've read that there are.
No, there's.
There's lead, there's, there's um, there's silver, there's, you know, cadmium, chromium.
These are.
Those are all basic elements, and they're very difficult to dispose of, considered to be hazard waste.
I know, and there's a lot of pollution when we are putting these up and.
Lot of water that moves all along the Nickerson Road, it comes from a higher ground on this side of the road, all the way to the end, there's probably five culverts um, under the roads, and this wa- the surface water is all moving down in through here and right through here, and this is the main channel right here, this, this drains up from Andy Hurlbut's property.
Right.
And it's all headed towards the little river.
And there's Artesian wells that go under there, under that, that travel.
Which is the concern of what happens over time, these, they say they're sealed and that there's no, nothing can seep out of them, but how do you know?
I don't think we can make that judgment.
Maybe Kayla could just speak to that. Kayla, could you speak to the panels?
Um, so in regards to the panels, um, I'm sure the applicant is not gonna wanna be using damaged panels, they'll be inefficient. Um, part of their submission that's required by the town is an operation and maintenance plan. Um, that outlines how often they'll be inspecting panels for defects. Um, you know, it's their, it's their obligation to take care of defect panels, and I would think they would want to for the efficiency of the system. Um, but the purpose of the O and M plan is to make sure that the site is staying clean. Um, and that any issues that come up are addressed immediately and as soon as possible.
But there's no guarantees on any of this stuff from what I'm hearing.
The O and M plan is operations and maintenance ongoing.
Throughout the life of this facility.
Panels seem to get a clean bill of health, is that correct?
I've heard of no, you know, issues as far as panels unless something's been physically damaged by um, by storm or, you know, um, manmade reason, uh, to my knowledge anyways.
So it seems, John Bailey, it seems that we, we wanna, you know, the, the federal agencies and the state agencies wanna protect certain, uh, same migratory birds. The way they wanna do it, where they wanna do it, how they wanna do it is fine, but un- un- unless it comes to something like this, that, that is being, you know, thrust down our throats, because well, you gotta believe in solar now, because this is the way to go, and it's, it's hysteria, now, now the migratory birds don't matter, and that's, that's the way it looks, because they can just go somewhere else, he said, they can, they can land somewhere else, they can, they'll just, they'll just go somewhere else.
Where's the painted turtles gonna lay their eggs?
Well.
Chicken living in the rain.
I don't know if I, I should comment, one thing, when the solar panels are here from an environmental standpoint, this land will be less disturbed than it is now having corn growing on it. There won't be any tilling of the ground, there won't be any chemical fertilizers, there won't be herbicides.
So you wouldn't care right behind your house if you had a whole field of solar panels?
I got one going in next door to me as it is. I, I cannot, I'm not in a position and the board is not in a position to judge that. We have to work with the guidelines provided by the state and the town to try to protect the people of Canton. And if those guidelines are all followed, we have to uh abide by that. Whether we ethically agree or not.
So there's no guidelines that you have to follow about protecting the citizens or the people of Canton property values? Or their, their way of living, what they see around them, why they moved there in the first place, why they stayed there, you don't have to protect that? You're, what, what is it you're protecting for us?
It's not gonna benefit us. There's no way that it benefits us.
Does lower taxes benefit you?
Lower my electric.
It's not gonna lower our taxes.
Did your county taxes go down this January?
Yes, ten dollars.
Yeah. You know.
And they went up for several years in a little too.
Yeah, but this, just January, why did they go down?
I don't know, I haven't looked into it.
There's a whole bunch of solar projects in this county in place right now that are contributing to this county's tax base. And it's, and it's gonna be more, the big project, wh- what we're dealing with here is small potatoes. The big project that's gonna go in on Rich Road is the equivalent of about fifty of these. And we have no say in that at all. And it's gonna have a terrific impact on the tax base for the county and the, and the town of Canton, and the school and Canton Central School. For the two hundred millions of dollars.
So we, but, but we basically won't, if this is gonna be all that regular, we won't have any taxes at all?
Don't know that.
Really, that's what you're thinking, it's gonna be so good.
What about all the roofs that are off the tax thing in the town of Canton anyway, will that be sufficient enough for all this farmland?
Run this by again.
All these roofs, like this building, for example, why don't you put it on that?
Great, we all agree that'd be.
We, we agree on that, but it's a case of scale and economics. Do we have any other comments?
I'm Judy Bailey, I'm curious about the, this lot, how far back with the existing weird property, does it go back, there's trees? Do they take part of those streams down?
If you want, you can see the. There will be no clearing, all using existing open space.
One of the things I wanted to say is I, I hear your concerns and I, I echo many of them myself. Is that the planning board is here to evaluate applications as they fit within the law. And that's what we, that's what we have to do, we have to see, does this meet, does this application meet the requirements? Within the process, there are things, and one of the things I don't know that we effectively addressed in here was your concern about endangered or protected species. In the Department of Environmental Conservation is part of the review. And if the Department of Environmental Conservation signs off on this as being a non-issue, it's not for the board to say that it is now an issue. You know, we're reliant on many other agencies um that are part of this process, so the property owners and the developers that come with an application, they have to go through as you mentioned, all of these hoops, and it includes things like meeting with the fire department and getting required safety plan, and going through the Department of Environmental Conservation historical societies and doing glare analysis and sound analysis, and all of these things that have to be have to be put through, and then they're evaluated by external engineers as well uh and put through all kind of legal processes, so we're here to receive those applications, evaluate them, do they fit within the law or don't they fit within the law? And.
So this is just the beginning, and then all these agencies have to come in and give their stamp of approval.
Uh, in most cases, they've already done that to get this far, right?
So this isn't the beginning?
No, no.
They've already done this, they, they've already said that there's nothing to protect it.
Partway.
And to refresh my memory, I did read it, but I don't remember, what was the county's reason for declining this project?
Um, the county's planning board got instructions roughly a year ago that if, for solar projects on ag land, that the county legislature themselves recommended to the planning board to not approve solar projects on agricultural land. Since that time the county planning board has turned down every project except for one. And, and that one we dealt with last night.
And why are they turning them down, why is their instruction to turn them down on agriculture building? They must see it differently.
They're not the final word on any of this.
No, I know, but, but what is their, what was their reason for just wholly saying? For just wholly saying not an agricultural land?
I, I can't tell you that. Do we have reports from them, Mike, that would say why they turned things down?
No, yeah, it's, it's. The main reason, like Ian said, um. Every solar site for the past year and a half have been turned down except the old DeKalb Road because of prime agricultural land. That's the only reason, prime agricultural land.
So this could be considered prime agricultural land?
But we don't have that directive from the town. So we have to work within the law that we have.
Five point five acres for prime. Yeah.
Out of the whole parcel.
Oh, Ralph Church, um, so is this part and parcel why the, um, the agricultural status is being, um. For lack of a better word revoked in the township of Canton. Um, uh, my father's land was just changed from agricultural status, we grow soybeans, corn, hay. You know, what have you, but, um, he lost his agricultural status years ago. Is this kind of a move in that photovoltaic direction?
No, no, um.
Yeah.
Um, the county every eight years goes through. The process of looking at all the agricultural land. In the town of Canton, or not town of Canton, excuse me, countywide to. Add or subtract, I can't say why they subtracted your father's, I, I don't.
I can't either.
No, so that's, the county does that, not the town, the county, county planning office goes through all. Countywide agricultural properties.
Is that located somewhere in the village of Canton?
The county, county office.
Okay, yeah, over there, um, Court Street.
Court Street, forty-eight and a half Court Street, so the county goes and they do that, they subtract and they add and they, um. Hypothetically, if, if this parcel has an ag exemption on it. The ag exemption is removed. And unfortunately, I believe the developer has to pay a penalty on that parcel. Um, but we, th- this board has nothing to do with taking parcels, adding parcels, but the county planning does. And actually, um, countywide this year, St. Lawrence County added thirty-six thousand acres of agricultural land.
Added.
Added.
You mean to the ag district?
To the ag.
District?
District.
Cause we had a conversation about exemption, that's, you know, that's.
Exemption is different, right, you gotta go through a lot of paperwork, a lot of hoops and.
Right.
But adding agricultural.
To an ag district.
Ag district.
I guess the only other question we have was the, uh, like the cradle to grave analysis, as far as like what's gonna be. Like what landfill would accept all this waste in twenty years after the ROI is either met or not?
At this point in time, they, they have an agreement that, um, landfill and Rodman would take them. There, we don't know who's going to be in business thirty years from now, twenty.
This is a thirty year project.
Right, but the effective efficacy of the panels is maybe twenty. There, how long are you planning for the, these panels to be there?
This project, yeah, it's a, it's, we have a twenty year lease with two five year options, so maximum up to thirty.
And they have to have an agreement in place that somebody would take. The panels as waste under today's terms. Yeah. And the bond is there that, that would pay for that.
Where are these, uh, panels manufactured, just out of curiosity?
They haven't been, we haven't procured them yet. Not until we get, you know, sort of projects approved. Then we hand it off to our committee.
Districts.
Where, stand apart, where have you purchased them before, or where have you gotten them from?
Uh, India, China, um, that's where they're typically, that's where the bulk of around the world that they're manufactured. Their incentives currently, I think the US government passed recently in the IRA that incentivizes US. Manufactured products, so our procurement team has been directed to focus on that going forward.
Are there any other comments?
When's the install day? We're a long way away.
Long ways away.
Five years?
No.
Or five months?
The ball, you have a ballpark when you would hope to actually be doing the work.
We don't typically, uh, construct during the winter, uh, in an area like this, so to fit it in with twenty twenty-three is pretty tight at this point. Um, certainly since materials haven't been procured yet, so it's likely gonna be as twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
How long does that take?
Uh, construction timelines somewhere between three and four months, start to finish. Yeah, the Canton Town website should really. Maybe whoever, whoever produces that website or manages it should really change the view.
No.
The front, uh, the front page, the first page of. Welcome to Canton, rolling pastures and hills and forests and all that. All joking aside, because we're headed away from it, and I, I. I would, I would hope that you turn this project down, you don't realize what this is doing to this neighborhood. And, 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 and there's just, there's just no telling what the future brings on this, and we're just. Falling into it head over heels because it seems to be very exciting to some people, and I get that, but it's not exciting for me. I, I, I'm just, uh, the hysteria over all this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, pardon me? I'm not excited about it. The, the hysteria over this is, what's next, what's five years down, or what's the hysteria gonna be then, it's just, it, it's just. Blowing up in our face because some people say this is the way it should be, get excited about.
Albany.
Yes.
Albany.
And we're just falling in line with it, and people think, yeah, I mean, what are they getting per acre, yeah, sounds great, yeah, but. The power density is just not there. Photovoltaics, wind.
So the homeowner gets money out of this deal.
Yeah.
What about, uh, what about the town of Canton, do they get a bonus out of this for putting this through?
Do you want to address that, Mike, or Bill, or Bill?
Bill.
That would be a great one.
I can address it, you can know better. Mr. Buchanan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, there you are.
Uh, there will be two things that'll provide financial benefits to the town. There will be a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Cause these projects are tax exempt by state law. For a period of fifteen years, and there will be a host community benefit agreement. Which will provide a stream of financial benefits to the town directly. So there's taxes, payments in lieu of taxes, and host community benefit revenues to the town. Uh, those things are under negotiation as we speak.
I don't know how many of them go through. There's a limit.
Yeah, there won't be many more. But there's a limit on how many of these you, you're.
No, but, but we're, uh, unfortunately. With these developers, with Canton having seven at the moment, not including the ninety-four C project. The grid is full, so hypothetically saying, Canton won't see anyone once, these are all. We've already had one drop out because. Because the line was, couldn't take what they wanted to put in.
The national, there's no place to put all this electricity.
Yeah, that thing.
We're still gonna build it onto a system so that we can get it from different sources, just no place for it to go.
There's places now, right now.
Yeah, but, but not down the road, i- i- and if, and if something comes on like this, and this is small, I get it, but. Something comes on like Rich Road and all that, they're, they're going to.
Rich Road has it on.
Yeah, but it's, you can't put this power, just, you can't just put it anywhere you want and just say, here, we're gonna, we're gonna use this. Some, some's gonna get shut down.
They would need to build new substations is what I understand. It would, and that's cost prohibitive for an individual project, like it wouldn't be worthwhile for a developer to propose a project this size. If they had to fund.
Or substations.
A new substation.
Right.
And, and the other connecting infrastructure that would, it would be in the millions.
Right.
I agree.
So you just put all these little small ones scattered all around the.
But there's a limit on them, that's what we're saying, was we're reaching the limit.
But the power is used locally?
Like it's going right into the local grid.
Local grid here?
Yeah.
Okay.
The big project, the Rich Road, they're gonna have their own substation, that's gonna hook into the big. Power lines and that'll be leaving the area.
Oh, I see.
But the, these projects, part of the reason they call them community solar, is because they hook into the local grid. And the watts coming out of them would be what's powering your house.
It was five meg for that project for.
For this one, that's the, that's the limit set by the state for community solar. I think, anything bigger than that comes under different guidelines.
Okay.
So all of the projects we're dealing with are less than five megawatts.
Hmm.
If there's no more comments, well, I'll say that the minutes of tonight's public hearing will become part of the case record. That the board will consider before making its decision. And do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some will.
In a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye. Opposed? That's the end of the public hearing, the public can stay and hear the rest of our meeting, or you can leave. As you wish, is there snacks? Does anybody need?
Sorry about my break.
I think there is a drinking fountain just outside of that.
That's pretty neat.
Are you deciding tonight?
Maybe. It's, we have to go through a lengthy environmental review. Uh, which.
Which is all the environmental items.
And it addresses, addresses a whole lot of the questions that you folks were asking tonight about aesthetics, wildlife, water, water. Not nobody in the community. Agricultural use, animals. And, uh, all of those things get considered. Blood, clean air.
You know, I want to apologize for not being able to attend last night's meeting, sorry I missed it, I understand things once smoothly.
Yes.
Yes. So is that Sandy, right here, where's Sandy?
Right here.
Oh Sandy's here.
This was your place, right?
This is where are you Sandy?
I'm right here.
Okay, you're here. You're right here.
No.
You're.
My house is right here.
Oh, and my house, oh, okay, I got you.
So.
Oh, I can't.
That's my backpack and everything, faces, that's, yeah.
But this is not your land.
No, this is where the solar panels are, Derek's land.
The green is, yeah, this is Derek's.
Derek's down there that owns, that, this was his.
Yeah.
Okay, that tree line there, that's the visual buffer. So there is space, there's some space, I understand, it's not the whole field.
That's, I guess, all the view of all the woods and all that stuff is gonna be blocked by these trees and that, so, I mean, there won't be any more. Stuff going on there after that, for the. It'll be. I know, I'm gonna leave you guys.
I just, I just want to say, I, personally, I won't speak for everybody, I sympathize.
Absolutely, yeah, but thank you, everybody for. But thank you for coming. And if you have questions, don't hesitate. Yeah, you can answer, I, with what we can, part of what we were saying to you is that you can anticipate, you can't, whatever, this is what we've got, this is what we're working with. But if you stay, you will see that there is a very complicated procedure, including everything from the D E C, from the Department of Transportation, from all the. Things, whether it's the turtles or the, or the birds, or the monarch butterflies, or the whatever.
These, these are the lists of all of the agencies that. That have to be contacted and dealt with for all of these projects. It's daunting.
Right, I worked on someone's.
Is there a copy, an extra copy?
Yeah, I read.
Of, we can't read it.
One of these?
No.
Oh, no, uh, oh, okay, thank you. Right, yeah, no, I was curious about, uh, this launch.
There you go.
Perfect, thank you.
There what? Do you know where the, um, on the, on the, on the whole road, where Derek was down there. So how close, so he, he's maintained, or giving a, a strip of land across that he can still use over here, I'm just curious.
Just this little piece.
That's good.
Well, he will technically own the whole thing.
Right, but I'm just wondering if he's still gonna have space to put all this stuff that's.
Yeah, his, his equipment's sitting right there right now.
But, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it was it, oh no, it was the other, it wasn't you who was asking about the website, or was it you? Those asking, those commenting on the website, no, I, I looked like that because I thought you were gonna comment on the calendar and the issues surrounding with the front page. No, so that's why, that's why I looked, I'm like, yeah, that, that involves me, but it's not my responsibility. But now.
Oh, I forgot, I've got a, a letter too that I should have read. Can I sneak this, this in for the public record?
You can still read it, and I'll take, if you don't mind, I'll take it, or take a copy of it to add to the minutes.
Okay. Uh, this is from John Hale. And he lives on one sixteen Hale Road, Canton, New York. Oh no, he actually lives on twenty-eight Cranmore Drive in Thomas River, New Jersey. I'm writing to express my concerns relating to the above caption. My primary concern relates to the ability of the solar project operator to fulfill its longer term obligations to maintain service. And ultimately decommission the site. Accordingly, I ask that the planning board consider requiring the operator of the solar project to post a performance bond. That runs to the benefit of the town for useful life of the project to ensure that the taxpayers will not be left. With the financial burden of cleaning up the environment and disposing of the equipment in the event that the tenant defaults on any of its covenants. During the useful life of the project. My other concern is that the negative impact to the visual aesthetic pastoral beauty of the area. And the reason that I have personally rejected and will continue to reject. Countless similar offers from solar operators seem to acquire sections of hail land for the same purposes. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully, John Hale. Should I respond to him about the, the, the bond or?
No, you should just read it into the record, Ian, that's all you have to do.
Well, I'll add it to the record and then.
He actually owns like right here. Like up in here, this area.
That's, he said Hale Road.
Hale Road.
Isn't that the dead end?
The dead end off of, uh.
Yeah. Used to.
But he owns the land right there.
Oh. Oh, so his address is over on Hale Road, but. Thomas River, New Jersey, still owns it.
I don't think he owns, I think Derek owns seventy-five acres there.
Yes, Derek owns here, I don't know if John Hale owns over there, I thought. But I, I know his place is over, over here on the Hale Road. The next order of business is approval of prior meeting, uh, minutes.
Which I sent.
Yes. Our ace secretary did, and we have minutes from the fifth of December. Have, have people had the opportunity to review that? Or any? Or any? Corrections in order?
I was particularly concerned about the names because I don't know the member, the members of the public, the way you, some of you might. So if I misspelled anybody's name or completely butchered it, um. It would be great to know so I could make sure it was accurate for the record.
I I read through them all. The only ones I knew were Cindy Randy and Rainbow.
Yeah. There was a Patricia.
Curtis's.
Andrew.
Yes, is that right? I couldn't read her handwriting.
Oh, geez.
I have the sign in sheet, but I can't read some of them, so I'm guessing.
Yeah, there was a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah, and the kind of in the middle. All right, no worries. Okay.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Opposed? Oh, there's chat up there.
Oh, are there? I'm sorry, I can't see it, so.
I just see two bubbles.
Ah, I'm upside down here. Oh, it was an audio issue. He fixed it.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you though, Phil. Appreciate it.
For old business. Is the mead road changes still on hold? Mike or Bill?
Bill's gone.
Bill's gone.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Still.
So.
Waiting on them.
That's tabled until further notice then.
Yes, yes, Iggy, we're waiting on them, miss. You know, it's not the first time you heard that.
No.
So are we, is he gonna, is? Mr. Bird gonna count on us again because of it?
No, you shouldn't hear them.
Well, the. Well, hypothetically enough. I don't know what they, I mean, we approve the site, we approve the plan. The thirty year seeker window is gone. So there's no.
Thirty day.
Day. Yeah, so, oh, so they're, they've gotta come.
So if we do another resolution.
And then they could sue us. Alright, at this point, they can't sue us.
It's not our conversation. I didn't see any reason to open it up.
Isn't it the resolution has a thirty day, but the seeker has four months? Something they said last night. Or somebody said.
Yeah, thirty days.
But it hasn't got.
There's something with four months though, Mike.
Yes, I was thinking about four months last night because I wrote it down.
I think four months doesn't involve us still.
No.
It's had something to do with seeker, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, one was a resolution, one was a secret. It was thirty days and four months, but I don't.
But as soon as we, if we do redoing the resolution, that window starts.
It reopens. Yeah.
So we'll just wait on them. Next on the agenda is discussion of this project, the twenty two Nickerson Road. Um, and then if. If people have time, we would tackle secret part two and three. Do we want to have some discussion before we address that? Otherwise, I can start with part two. This is a tough one.
Yeah, I did find the study that talks about the, there's no drop in. Property values across the West. That makes anybody feel any better?
That's certainly a viable concern. On a long level.
The visual has always been a concern for me.
Yeah.
You know, and I liked the last project with the double rows offset, you know, I don't know, is this single?
They've got, they've got double rows.
I think if we did the, you know, the white spruce. You know, as opposed to, you know, some of the more dear favorites than, yeah. And the fast growing nature was caught my attention last night as well, so.
How big are the trees when you plant them?
The trees will be six feet. Um, and then the shrubs will be a little bit faster, but the shrubs grow much quicker than the trees will.
I was gonna say last night. They were gonna have put in ten footers.
They may not survive as well, so.
No.
That's true.
And your your panels are sixteen feet high.
It's the highest, the maximum.
That's higher than everybody else's. Everybody else is at twelve. Is there, is there a reason for that?
That's a token, correct?
Yes, it tilts, so it will vary, so when it's at its maximum peak. Um, and then there will be some variables based on the equipment that we get. Um, so we're saying right now it's a maximum of that. It could be shorter than that based on the equipment that we're able to obtain.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll start on the seeker part two.
I was just curious where the poles were gonna come out. The road. At the roadway. They're over here.
Over here.
Yeah, okay.
They are.
Like this is the landscape.
Ninety twenty nine here. Sometimes.
They're they're right here along the straight access road. National grid requires a certain amount of straight. Feet off of it, so they're all.
And there, I saw a page here with the um. Stuff with. The landings.
Oh, it's further back. It's like the last year.
What's that?
Excellent. The um, the trees and the shrubs.
Just have one more question that caught my attention. You said that the equipment pads were not gonna be removed?
So. After construction, so during construction, um, you know. But but as far as seekers confirm or doing it, that that counts as a pervia. Frankly, pervias.
Right, but I'm saying like the decommitting plan, everything goes back to original state.
People seen enough of this page? Well, we'll start part two. Um, let me grab my commentary here.
Are you with our data or?
I'm with our data.
I got you backward. Thank you.
It's an empty over here. Right here, so here, so. Again, this unfortunately, this is not her land.
What's up?
No, I'm just trying to look at, you know, it's hard.
It is.
On these people too.
These people, these two houses have significant. Trees around, trees around the back of their properties. This one does not. This is wide open. This is the landowner, so we we can't give him any sympathy.
And here, because of. Um, County Route twenty one Kent Russell Road or whatever you wanna call it. This, I believe, Megan, we're gonna extend the trees. I think we discussed that on.
Yeah.
Because of the visual of this, they're gonna, I don't know, I don't know how we.
Didn't say I don't know that every day.
I gave you the smaller prints when we walked in, so it shows. It shows um, the extension here because when we did the initial visuals from six, you could really see it from.
So I just kind of extended this, or we really can't.
So we put them all.
But we couldn't do that technically, but it was supposed to be a discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, these are contour lines.
Yes, so they aren't gonna see this that much anyway.
Well, some of them are going down. Well, no, the shows, it doesn't show the, it doesn't show the contour lines on this side.
That's right.
But they're there. They're there because the stream is the low.
And then it comes, comes up there. Was the back corner, you know, and then somebody came in and they cleared a house spot right next to us and I couldn't do anything about it. Property.
Let's, let's start on uh, the seeker part two.
Okay.
The impact on the land. Was a yes. And that means it's proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to the water table is less than three feet. It's decked as being moderate to large impact. B, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes fifteen percent or greater, no impact. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. No impact. The proposed action may involve the excavation or removal of more than a thousand tons of natural material. No impact. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, no impact. Proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. A small impact. G, the proposed action is or may be located when the, within a coastal erosion hazard area. No impact. Any comments there?
No, it's just interesting, you know, the the um, in that increase in pervia surface is less than one tenth of an acre.
Yes.
Uh, and so that the even is during construction, not afterwards.
Kayla, quick question. Um, similar to last night, the moderate is just due to the number of of posts.
Right, so part two is primarily used to identify potential impacts. And there is that, you know, that one bullet up above that if it exceeds a numerical threshold, it should be a moderate to large impact. So that's why in the part three supporting info, you know, we identify that, but then we also, you know. Outline that there is a SWIP that's been prepared um, that should mitigate any adverse impacts.
We impact, number two, the impact on geological features, there's no impact. The impacts, number three, the impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, examples strange rivers, ponds or lakes. The answer is yes. A, the proposed action may create a new water body. No impact. B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent or more than an acre. Or or more than an acre, an acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water, no impact. C, the proposed action may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. No impact. D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland. Or in the better banks of any other water body. A small impact. E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion, runoff, or by disturbing bottom sediments. A small impact. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. No impact. G, the proposed action may include construction. Of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface waters, no impact. H. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation. Or other degradation of receiving water bodies. That's a small impact. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. No impact. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body, no impact. K, the proposed action may require there's construction of newer or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. No impact. Are there any comments on the impacts of surface water?
Looks like it'll be mostly growing from.
Similar to the other projects.
Yeah. But there is a lot of water on this piece of land.
It can't be too much.
Wetlands not state.
Yeah, they're on.
The wetland.
The little spots of of wetlands that are within the array are are federal non-regulated. And it can't be too wet because they're growing corn on it.
Okay. And we did talk about this the last time we came.
Yeah, corn doesn't like wet feet.
We we noted that the stream. Over by the Canton Russell Road really runs pretty good in the spring.
Oh, it's running right now.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I haven't seen it.
I was out there this morning.
Okay.
No, I couldn't stand it. I had to go, I had to check it out. No, and the stream was running pretty well today.
But what's the elevation of the stream compared to where the array is gonna be built? I see.
Well, you can see, you got a lot of contour lines. The stream is significantly downhill from it. And it's ten, ten fifteen feet. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Which means.
They can go right.
Yeah, they can go right into that supporting to the army.
Yeah. And but they'll be doing the storm.
Right.
That that requires them to do all of the uh.
Yes.
Stuff to mitigate silt.
Yep.
Um, number four is the impact on groundwater. And the answer was no. Number five, impact on flooding. The answer was yes. The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. A, the proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway, no impact. The proposed action may result in development within a hundred year flood plan. No impact. C, the proposed action may result in development within a five hundred year flood plan, no impact. D, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. A small impact. E, the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding, no impact. F, if there is a dam located on the site of the proposed action with the dam in need of repair or upgrade, no impact. Any comments on that?
It's a small impact similar to the other projects in terms of the road.
The road and the uh, the small, the concrete pad for the. We're getting, so we almost.
Yeah.
Number six, the impact on air, there's no impact. Number seven, here we go, the impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. And it said yes. A, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species. As listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. No impact. B, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat. Used by any rare, threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. Small impact. C, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need. As listed by New York State or the federal government. That use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. No impact. D, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need. As listed by New York State or the federal government. No impact. E, the proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered. Natural landmark to support biological community. It was established to protect. No impact. F, the proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of the designated significant natural community. No impact. G, the proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat. For the predominant species that occupy or use the project site. Small impact. H, the proposed action requires the conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grassland. Or any other regionally or locally important habitat. No impact. No impact. I, the proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational project only involves use of herbicides or pesticides. No impact, you're not planning on using any herbicides. Let me ask my question.
The B, the B is the monarch butterfly again.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there was also um. And some correspondence provided by the applicant, there was a letter from the DC regarding. Um blending turtle sightings within point seven five miles of the project site. Um, so they did request certain mitigation measures. Um, one option was to constrict construction from October fifteenth through May fifteenth. Or um during construction, the uh the construction site can be enclosed with. In this case, I believe the silt fencing would be appropriate, um and there needs to be daily inspections for. Um turtle sightings, blending turtle sightings.
Does this fence have the six inch wide?
The silk fence would be, in this case, they would want that to be um buried in in the substrate. Rather than um, they would want to limit the turtles from getting on site during construction, following construction, um there should be no issues.
And then G. Uh, the small impact.
G is essentially related to just the change in cover type of of the area. Um. There's gonna be a conversion of approximately nine acres of agricultural land and eighteen point three acres of meadows and grasslands, um.
It'll be better.
Right, so it is all, and especially because that perimeter fence will have that six inch um gap as well. There shouldn't be any adverse impacts wildlife resulting from the project.
Thank you. Number eight is the impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources, yes. A, the proposed action may impact soil classified within soil groups one through four of the New York State land classification system. So small impact. B, the proposed action may sever, cross, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. Including cropland, hayfields, pasture, vineyard, orchard, et cetera. And the answer was small impact. C, the proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land. A small impact. D, the proposed action may irre- irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses. Either more than two and a half acres if located in an agricultural district. Or more than ten acres if not within an agricultural district. And they rated it as a moderate to large impact. E, the proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system. That's a small impact. F, the proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential. Or pressure on farmland, small impact. G, the proposed action is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan, it's no impact. Does anybody know if there's tiling under that ground? There's not, there's no tile, okay.
So has Ag and Markets approved this? I think I saw someplace where. They're good?
Yeah.
And our response from Ag and Market. Does not affect. Six NYCRR, part six seventeen. Um, then it goes on, you know, non-residential departmental facilities. Defined in one NYCRR, part three seven one point two, or. Uh agricultural districts under NYSERDA, clean energy standard or New York Sun Commercial. An award was made, an award was made August first twenty eighteen. Department would encourage the town board and town planning board to consider. Obvious off-site impacts to agriculture adjacent farmland to the project area. Supplementing any agriculture use with issues made, SBA adverse impacts on agricultural. So it's the same one we've.
Didn't it say something about the the land receives an ag assessment? Then uh, what is this called, maybe a. But uh some kind of a penalty needs to be paid.
Well, they have to pay to make up the difference on the back taxes that would have been from the ag assessment.
Yeah, there is, yeah, I'm sorry.
But that's that's outside of our. Jur- jurisdiction.
Contact the town assistant.
Yeah.
And just just to confirm, these are pile driven rats. So the word irreversible.
Yeah, I I was surprised at the, if they, my understanding of all these. Yeah.
Can be, can be reverted to agricultural use.
Kayla, do you, do you wanna address why?
Yeah, so I mean, this can obviously be. Up to the board how they wanna phrase this, I think we've talked about this once before because I know it does have that irreversible language. We just went with the conservative approach. Um, and since this project is kind of a, you know, there's at least that thirty year lifespan, um. We go conservatively with irreversibly, but that it's ultimately up to the board how they wanna. The the main reason that that's checked moderate to large is because it's conversion of nine acres within an agricultural district. So ultimately, it's up to the board if they would like to change that to a small impact or how you'd like to respond.
Well, then in the, in the period of the solar uh functioning, the ray functioning for that thirty, twenty thirty years, it is. At that point irreversible during that time because it's supposed to go for the length of the uh the contract. Isn't that how you could read that?
That I think that's what Kayla's saying.
Yeah.
You don't plan on doing any. Go.
Cheap shit.
Okay, alright.
Where would be the the time to talk about the mulling, I liked your idea. There last night. I thought there was a place, but I just, I just don't wanna miss it.
Yeah, we. We won't miss it. Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources, and the answer was yes. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use pattern. Between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. A, the proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource, no impact. B, the proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. No impact. C, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally. Or year round, and both are small impacts. D, the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is. One routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, and that's a small act impact. And two recreational or tourism based activities, and that's no impact. E, the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. And that's no impact. F, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. Zero to a half, a half to three miles, three to five miles and five plus miles, and that's called a small impact. Are there any comments on that?
Well, there's some people from the public that would disagree on a small impact.
Mm-hmm. I think officially that's uh that's within the the law, you know, the officially. Designated scenic views. And you know, like you said, I don't, I say, I agree with your comment, but.
Well, the the line.
Working within the law.
The line that. Really applies is that. That the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, the Russell Road.
I don't, I don't know because I I've been down Nickerson Road. Is that the Canton Gun Club that day?
Yep.
Yeah, is that still operating?
Yep.
So it's still operating?
Yes.
So that'd be recreational.
It would be public.
I would call that.
You can't see it from there, you'd see it when you were driving by.
Going to there.
To there. If you're driving to the sportsman's club, you'd see it on your right. From the sportsman's club, you would not be able to see it.
No, no.
Too far away with too much.
But I, like I said, I personally, I'm gonna see it every single day as I drive to and. Yeah, yeah, you're.
Until April, when you move to town.
Yeah. Ending home inspection.
Are there any other comments on that topic? Number ten, the impact on historic and archaeological resources, there's no impact. Number eleven, the impact on open space and recreation, there's no impact. Twelve, the impact on critical environmental. No impact. Number thirteen, the impact on transportation, we have no end that. Number fourteen, the impact on energy, there's no impact. Number fifteen, the impact on noise, odor, and light, and the answer is yes. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise odors for outdoor lighting. A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation, and it's a small impact. B, the proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school. Licensed state care center or nursing home, there's no impact. C, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, no impact. D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties, no impact. E, the proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, there's no impact. And with comments there? That, yeah.
Yeah.
With sound evaluation.
You constructing in phases?
I don't think so, I think this is all.
All one.
All one continuous.
Yeah, there've been no discussions.
Number sixteen, the impact on human health, the answer is no. Number seventeen, the consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, the answer was yes. A, the proposed action. Land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. And it's a small impact. B, the proposed action will cause the permanent population of the city, town, or village in which the project is located. To grow by more than five percent, no impact. C, the proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, there's no impact. D, the proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans, it's no impact. E, the proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure. Or is distant from existing infrastructure, it's no impact. F, proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development. That will require new or expanded public infrastructure, it's no impact. G, the proposed action may induce secondary development impacts. Example residential or commercial development not included in the proposed action, and there's no impact. Any comments on this section? And we'll go on to eighteen, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, and the answer was yes. A, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community. It's no impact. B, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, and there's no impact. C, the proposed action may displace affordable or low income housing in an area. Where there's a shortage of such housing, and there's no impact. D, the proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. And there's no impact. E, the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character. And there's no impact. F, the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. There's a small impact unless you're Sandra Bar. Any comments on this section?
You're right.
What about Sandra?
Yep.
Yeah, there's another house right there, um it's, I mean, even closer.
That's his sister, so probably not gonna be a problem.
You think she'll get a kickback or something? Yeah, this is Sandra's place. Do you live right there?
I live at the other end of the road.
Nickerson?
Mm-hmm.
The far end.
Right across from the sportsman's club.
Oh, okay. That's the end of uh the seeker part two form. Do people have their evaluation form?
Yeah, there's one right here.
Sorry.
Suppose there's a double row for agricultural resources.
I didn't do that either.
Not, not even Deborah's perfect.
Right?
I can't agree with that. Not perfect, right? Oh, you're saying that she is.
Yeah, you bet.
Put it two lines in it. She gets a ninety.
Like that was extra credit as well.
Bill signed where Eric was supposed to sign, Eric signed where Bill's.
Yeah, we gotta consider the source of this stuff. Anyway. The impact on land, what's our collective agreement here?
Small.
Small. Okay. A lot of the impact would be short term.
I have moderate, short term, and probable for the construction area and then. Small, long term, and probably.
The impact on the geological features was none, impact on surface water. During construction. The impact on the groundwater. Impact on flooding. Small, real small. Yeah, long term and probably. Cause they're putting a road in there. The impact on air was none, impact on plants and animals, small, long term, improbable. You know. The impact on agricultural resources.
Small, long term, and probably.
Kind of leaning towards the medium there.
I had.
It's small size, moderate, yeah.
Again, it's. Five point five acres of prime farmland, the rest is farmland that drained, you told me corn doesn't like wet feet, I mean, it's like.
Yeah, well, and I I I read the state guidelines for the, how they determine it, and based on that, it's small.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even though I think it should be.
Well, it would be big if somebody was putting a housing development in there. But because this is potentially reversible. But, but because this is potentially reversible.
Yeah. The impact on the aesthetic resources.
Small, and I put medium term because of the shading.
Oh, because of the trees.
Yeah, screening would grow in, but it's gonna take a while.
You know. Oh.
Well, I don't know.
No, no, I, I've been looking.
Just throwing out what I have.
Yeah.
Well, that's the irony, I mean, the irony is they're going to put screening, they're going to create a barrier so that it's not in her face, and yet at the same time, it blocks. Her access to other person's land, so it's like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
And probable.
Oh, yeah, they do what it's happening.
Just confirm.
Okay.
It'll be really interesting to see in fifteen years what the, what are the buffers.
Yeah, what they.
They hold up, yeah.
Yeah. The impact on historic and archaeological resources.
None.
None. Impact on open space and recreation.
None, none.
Impact on critical environmental areas.
None, none.
Transportation, none, energy, none, none. Impact on noise, odor and light, small. Oh.
Well, I thought moderate for construction.
Yeah, I had small, short term.
Moderate, short term.
Yeah, so.
I had a small, but I could be convincing moderate.
Well, I just, you never, again, if we're gonna do it all at once rather than in phases or rather than whatever, because they were gonna do it in a small five acre thing. And you, you know.
We've based projects before.
Oh, but it's not, you know.
It's a longer construction.
And I think at this point, we're not talking about a huge project either, so, you know, it's trying to make it.
Great.
Well, and with some of those restrictions related to the hurdles, a shorter right construction time is probably better.
Better, yes.
Cause that was about an October window.
Right, they had. October.
These, he's.
October to May.
Oh, okay. A moderate to large impact would occur under one or more of these circumstances. The project will generate regular or sporadic noise throughout its operations above and regulated level. The noise will be generated continuously during day and or nighttime hours, even if the overall ambient noise levels do not change.
Okay.
The noise will be generated sporadically or continuously in our residences, businesses, hospitals, et cetera. Adjacent to the proposed project. Noise levels above ambient conditions will be produced long term.
So small.
And noise.
Yeah, small, small.
So that, that, that bar set pretty high.
Yeah.
Give me that. Impact on human health.
None.
None. Consistent with community plans. Small and long term. Yeah, that's what I had, and be consistently with community character.
Small.
Do we need any further discussion on the secret before we take action?
On the noise, odor and light, did you have small, short term probable or small, long?
Short term and probably during construction.
During construction. Yup.
I guess Eric, I'll stick it in now. Yeah. On your maintenance, and this is not part of the secret process. Um, you said you were gonna mow that here four times a year? Correct, from an environmental standpoint. You'd be farther ahead to mow it once every three years in the fall. And it won't disturb any kinds of wildlife that's nesting, feeding, living their lives in there. And the other thing is if you mow it three or four times a year, you say you're gonna plant um, pollinators in there. If you mow it three or four times a year, all you're gonna have left is grasses and, and the dunes, clovers. Because nothing else can stand to mow it. From an environmental standpoint, if you mow it once every three years, it'll keep stuff from getting big. You don't want it.
Wooden, yeah.
You don't want the brush, the trees. By golden rod and milkweeds for the famous monarch butterfly. They will all prosper.
It looks messier, but.
What's that?
It'll look a lot messier, but it'll be better. But it'll also look more into the landscape.
It'll save your company all kinds of money.
Yeah, I don't disagree with any of this, so we've put three to four because you know, when we have our, our crew go out and check on the system every once in a while, make sure it's operating correctly and, and check on the growth of what's been planted out of the vegetation to make sure that it's not growing up to the point where it's blocking and, you know, the bottom of the paddles because it restricts production, so. Um, as long as it's not restricting production, then there's no need to mow.
Okay, and so even, even paths, you know, as opposed to the whole, whole site, but still wait till.
Right. Right, and it also depends on, you know, how much, how much rain. In a particular rain year.
Right.
During the summer, you know, if we have a lot of rain, it had a lot more rain, if it's a dry summer. So it's, we throw three to four in there as the potential of what it could be, but you know, I, I like the idea certainly of once a year.
Yeah. Well, or once every tree.
I mean, once every tree, that's, that's what you said.
It's the best. Those are D E C recommendations for keeping like open fields. Um, that are not being used for agriculture, you just move it once every three years, it keeps it from growing up to, uh, wooden.
Next, next stage in succession.
Yes. So, just, okay, fox.
That, that, here.
And then. Your, your pacing is, is designed to promote wildlife, uh, being able to use the site. And so if you, you know, you're doing that and you're trying to keep everybody happy, um, from an ecological standpoint. This takes it one step farther. And from an environmental standpoint, it's way better than like I said before, fat and corn being planted out there, where they're tilling the ground using fertilizer and, and round up.
So.
And then the white, white spruce species.
Yeah. Spruce is gonna be way better, there's multiple species of them, but.
With the spruce in general.
Yeah, but white, white spruce is a native tree that grows pretty fast and, um, is as prickly needles that you don't like. Balsams are, are right there with, with cedar deer candy.
Cedar, I remember our takeaway painting last week was no cedar.
No, no. No, I really need to take you out around here. You can see, you can see the browse line.
Yeah, I remember a friend that got to, she was, uh, what, sixteen, eighteen years old, but she realized it didn't grow that way.
Oh. I, I, I won't waste people's time, but I, I was over to Saranac Lake last week. And there's no deer. And there was beautiful cedar trees right to the ground, it was remarkable. Um. Let's see.
Like I said, I don't, I didn't.
Which one of these is exact?
On this, this single sheet.
Okay.
That's it, you guys are all.
Yeah.
Wonderful ones.
Our people.
All you gotta do.
Determination.
Right here.
I got it here, it's nowhere, yeah, that's it.
And then you do the red.
Right.
All that is going on.
Feels good though.
Upon review of the information recorded on this environmental assessment form, as noted, plus this additional support information, which is under separate cover. And considering both the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, it's the conclusion of the Town of Canton Planning Board as lead agency that we have three choices. A, this project will result to no significant adverse effects on the impacts on the environment. And therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, this negative declaration is issued. Or B, although this project could have a significant adverse impact on the environment, that impact will be avoided or substantially mitigated because of the following conditions, which will be required by the lead agency. With those conditions, there will therefore be no significant adverse impacts from the project as conditioned, and therefore, this conditioned negative declaration is issued. A condition negative declaration may be used only for unlisted actions. Or C, this project may result in one or more significant adverse impacts on the environment. And an environmental impact statement must be prepared to further assess the impacts and possible mitigation, and to explore alternatives to avoid or reduce those impacts. Accordingly, this positive declaration is issued. Do we have an opinion here? I, I personally think that it's an A. The, the negative declaration, the negative declaration, the negative declaration. Do I need a motion on that, Mike, or no?
Yeah, we didn't want, I'll move that.
Okay. All in favor? I, opposed? You're off.
But I don't count, so.
Well, you count in our opinion.
Okay.
So can I use this one as the one I sign?
Well, and do you count for the super majority?
She's a super majority, all right. The name of the action is the Canton Russell Solar Project, the name of the lead agency is the Town of Canton Planning Board. The name of the responsible officer in the lead agency is Ian McKeller. The title of the responsible officer is Planning Board Chair. I have to sign. Let's see, twenty fourth. Thanks, sir. Now I can do the resolution number thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I need a motion to read that?
You read it and then they'll vote on roll call.
Okay. Resolution number three, the the proposed action is the Canton Russell Solar Project. Resolution determining that the proposed Canton Russell Solar Project is a type one action and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas Forefront Power New York, Canton Project One LLC, the applicant is proposing the Canton Russell Solar Project located in the Town of Canton, St. Lawrence County, New York. And whereas the project has been classified as a type one action as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act in six N Y C R R, part six one seven point four. And whereas the Town of Canton Planning Board sent a letter and part one of a full environmental assessment form to other potentially interested agencies and involved agencies, as these terms are defined in the seeker regulations found at six N Y C R R, part six one seven point two, indicating the town planning board's desire to serve as the lead agency as this quoted term is defined in the seeker regulations. And to complete a coordinated review of the project in accordance with six N Y C R R, part six one seven point six. And whereas responses from interested and involved agencies were requested. And each of the potentially interested and involved agencies has agreed to or raised no objections to the Town of Canton Planning Board serving as lead agency for the project. And whereas pursuant to the seeker regulations, the Town of Canton Planning Board has considered the significance of the potential environmental impacts of the project by A, using the criteria specified in section six one seven point seven of the seeker regulations. And B, examining the F E A F for the project. Including the facts and conclusions in parts one, two and three of the F E A F together with other available supporting information to identify the relevant areas of environmental concern. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Canton Planning Board hereby establishes itself as lead agency for the project. And be it further resolved that based upon an examination of the F E A F and other available supporting information. And considering both the magnitude and importance of each relevant area of environmental concern. And based further upon the town's knowledge of the area surrounding the project. The Town of Canton Planning Board makes the determination that the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact. And that the project will not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. And be it further resolved that as a consequence of such findings and declaration. And in compliance with the requirements of seeker, the Town of Canton Planning Board at lead agency hereby directs the Town of Canton Planning Board Chair to sign the F E A F, part three. Determination of significance indicating that a negative declaration has been issued for the project. This resolution shall take effect immediately and will be properly noticed. Uh. Do I have a motion to accept this? Make motion. Second.
My second.
And we all get to cast our votes and sign our names. All in favor? I, I opposed?
I just have one question, like, uh, we knew it sent this draft over and we started listening comments.
This was.
Inside the comments were accepted, I wanted to make sure it's the.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's the difference, which, and this is the negative declaration.
All right.
Yeah.
Whoa, Bill's last. Establishing a reputation. I better do it right now.
Project company.
Yeah, all the changes. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
In open space. Unless you want to.
No.
Okay.
If somebody wants to do it.
Well, as long as there were four of us.
That was three. Oh, super majority.
Yeah, we have to have a super.
I think that actually is only for resolution four, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Three, the back deck, yeah, the back deck isn't required a super majority, I don't think, because that wasn't.
You get it or.
Might get that.
I'm gonna have. Hard to stand for.
Because that part wasn't reviewed by the county planning board. All these details.
I already signed it once, I'm gonna get tired.
No, you get tired reading the next one.
Yeah, no, I've got plans for that.
John.
Want to skip a few?
I have volunteered. And say, listen, I'm.
How fast can you read?
Many.
Look at this, John. It looks like my reading glass.
They broke.
Yeah, they.
He just did it so he'd get out.
All right, let me read this.
Well, you're gonna talk about it first, everybody comfortable or?
This is the one, uh, approving the site plan. Especially use permit, especially use permit.
Right.
Are there any further comments on this?
Anything different from the other ones?
No, it's basically the same as well.
They were talking about some changes, that's why.
No, uh, through the reference of Mr. Buchanan, I sent, uh, forefront and Arcadius the approval, uh, resolution, we could advance and between their the turtle, their, their attorneys and our attorney, they, they came to an agreement with.
Wording. Which is as well as.
Which is important, yes.
Yes, there. Do I need a motion to keep going on this?
Think when it's done.
Okay. You wanna read that? You wanna read there, John?
Okay.
If your glasses stay on.
Yep, the resolution approving site plan for Canton Russell Solar Project dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Whereas FFP New York Canton Project One LLC. Poses to construct a five point zero megawatt alternating current solar power generation facility. On twenty four point two five acres of a seventy four point one four acre lot owned by Robert Sanderson. Located at twenty two Nicholson Road, Canton, New York. Tax ID one oh three point zero zero one dash one dash three point one. And whereas a pro- proposed facility will be operated by FFP New York Canton Project One LLC. Will enter into lease with the owner. For use of the property to construct the facility. Whereas pursuant to the Town of Canton Local Law Number Three of. Twenty nineteen zoning law, the proposed facility is considered a major solar collection system is permitted. Through, through the issuance of a special use permit in commercial and rural zoning districts. Subject to site plan review and approval by the Town of Canton Planning Board. And whereas in September twenty twenty two, the applicant submitted an application to the planning board seeking site plan approval for the facility. And whereas documents submitted by the applicant as part of its initial application submission. And numerous subsequent submissions consisted of, among other things, one, the application. Two, a full environmental assessment form, PAF. Three, site plans, four, requisite filing fee and escrow amount for the application. And five variety of additional documents collectively, the application. And whereas the planning board, the assistance of its technical and legal consultants engaged in a detailed review of the application. Materials. And whereas on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, the planning board held a public hearing for the facility. To gather comments and consider the verbal and written comments submitted by the public. And whereas pursuant to the Town of Canton zoning law, the planning board has taken into consideration the location, arrangement, size, design. And general compatibility of the facility to surrounding uses, the potential glare and noise impacts. The adequacy of stormwater and drainage facilities. The adequacy of landscaping affecting visual and noise buffers. The overall impact on the neighborhood. And whereas the application is considered a type one action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, CECL. Whereas the planning board declared its intent to be lead agency and conducted a coordinated review of its. Established, of its establishment of lead agency and the application pursuant to seeker. And circulate, and circulated said intent to all involved interested and interested agencies. Whereas all involved and interested agencies either consented to the planning board being lead agency or allowed the. Thirty day period elapses and the planning board as lead agency conducted a thorough review of. Of the project, carefully examining all of the potential impacts of the proposed project. Whereas the planning board has thoroughly reviewed part two and three of the EAF and has been assisted. In the review of the seeker documents and application by consulting engineers Barton and La Judas. Whereas the application was referred to the St. Lawrence County Planning Agency and Planning Agency disapproved. The project at the meeting dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty two and referred back to the Town Planning Board for consideration. Planning Board has the, has ultimate decision power in this case and can overrule the county play, planning agency referral. With a majority plus one vote. Whereas on January twenty first, twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, the planning board approved parts two and three of the AF. And issued a seeker negative declaration for the project as set forth on EA F part three as written. Well reasoned statement, which concludes that the facility will not create any significant adverse environmental impacts. And that a draft environmental impact statement, DEIS, will not be prepared. Now therefore be to resolve in accordance with the Town of Canton zoning law, the planning board hereby grants a site plan approval. Requested by the applicant subject to the following conditions, which must be satisfied unless otherwise stated. Prior to the stamping and signing of the site plans by the planning board chairperson. One, the applicant shall provide all requested information outlined in B and L's comment letter dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty three. Two, the applicant shall enter into a decommissioning agreement and shall be approved by the Town of Canton. Board, town board and the town attorney and signed by the town supervisor by the applicant and by the property owner. Three, the applicant shall issue a performance bond. Or other equivalent financial security for the decommissioning of the facility, which shall be approved by the town board and the town attorney. Four, B and L has proposed to the town board to provide engineering services in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And the town board shall enter into an engineering escrow agreement with the applicant. In which the applicant will agree to fund the escrow amount of fifteen thousand dollars to compensate. The Town of Canton having been out inspect and advise the town. And planning boards on the compliance of the construction with approved, the approved drawings. Engineering escrow agreement must be approved by the town board and town attorney and signed by the town supervisor and by the applicant. Five, the engineering escrow fund referenced above in section three will also be used to compensate B and L staff. For the labor and expenses incurred in performing semi annual site inspections of facility during the spring. On or about April fifteenth and fall on or about October fifteenth. After construction is complete and the above referenced construction inspection is complete. B and L so, eh, so therefore. Do. So therefore do semi annual site ins, oh, do that's.
Thereafter do.
Oh, thereafter do, but that, that's.
Yeah, wrongdoing.
Okay. Do semi annual site inspections of the condition of the perimeter landscaping and the site access road and the overall condition of the site. On a yearly basis, the applicant shall place twenty five hundred dollars in the town's escrow account. To cover the cost of the semi annual site inspections. Following each semi annual site inspection, B and L will provide a written update to the town and planning boards. The semi annual site inspections will be performed each year that the facility is in operation. Six, the applicant shall post a bond or other equivalent security for the operation. And maintenance of the facility, including the maintenance of the perimeter landscaping and the site access road. At, at the sole expense of the applicant. The bond or other equivalent security must be approved by the town board and the town attorney. Seven, the applicant shall have the landscaping inspected at its expense. Once a year for the first five years of operation by a registered landscape architect or arborist. And the applicant must submit a written report to the town and planning boards identifying any areas of landscaping that have died. Or not thrived and will be replaced by the applicant. Eight, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards with copies of a written agreement with the owner of the property. Demonstrating that the applicant has the authority to construct the facility on the property. Nine, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards with a signed notice of intent. Of and acknowledgement of receipt by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Of the NOI, notice of intent and the final stormwater pollution prevention plan. The applicant, ten, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards and B and L with a written proposed schedule for construction facility. Eleven, prior to commencing the operation of the facility, applicant must meet with emergency responders at the site to discuss the procedures to be followed. In the event of fire or and other emergencies. Within five days of the meeting, the applicant must provide the town supervisor and town planning boards with hard copies of the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes must indicate the name and contact information for each of the attendees and provide a detailed description of the procedures. That will be followed by the emergency responders in the event of a fire or other emergency. Twelve, the applicant shall provide payment for outstanding fees, including any invoices by planning board. And or town board consultants and attorneys. Thirteen, the applicant shall provide the town and planning boards with copies. Of all other approvals issued for the facility, including all local and state permits as required. And sign offs by all interested parties and involved agencies. Fourteen, the applicant has no present plans for additional expansion of the facility. Fifteen, the applicant will notify in writing by U S Postal Service to town and planning boards thirty days prior to the sale. Assignment LLC membership purchase agreement or transfer of the facility to another entity. The new owner of the facility must provide the town and planning boards with their contact information, including mailing address. Telephone number and email address. Moreover, no sale, transfer, assignment may take place unless the new owner agrees in writing. To comply with the conditions of approval. Sixteen, in the event of, at the Town of Canton receives complaints regarding glare impacts on the facility onto affected landowner properties. And or public roadways surrounding the project, the applicant must identify the source. Of the glare and fax and implement immediate mitigation measures and notify the town writing of the mitigation measure under segment. If I can finish this last page.
Do you need the ball pack to come?
Seventeen, no. In the event that the Town of Canton receives complaints regarding light and or noise impacts from the facility. Onto affected landowner properties, the applicant must immediately identify the source of the light and or noise impacts. And implement appropriate mitigation measures and notify the town in writing of the mitigation measures undertaken. Eighteen, after completion of the facility and prior to the commencement of operation. The applicant shall retain the services of a New York State licensed professional engineer to provide post construction certification at the facility. Complies with applicable codes and industry practices and has been constructed according to approval design plans. The applicant shall also provide certification of national grid. That the interconnection from the solar facility to the electrical transmission line has been inspected and approved. The applicant, nineteen, the applicant and any successor or assigned must maintain commercially reasonable. General liability insurance in the amount, no less than one million dollars each occurrence and two million dollars general ac- aggregate. And must name, name the Town of Canton as the additional insured on the policy and provide a waiver of subrogation to the town. Twenty, the applicant shall enter into a payment in lieu of taxes. Pilot agreement shall be approved by the Town of Canton Board and the town attorney and signed by the town supervisor and the applicant. And twenty one, the applicant shall enter into a host community benefit agreement with the town as required by paragraph. F seven of the zoning law. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes and directs the planning board chairperson. To stamp and sign the site plans upon the applicant's satisfaction of all applicable conditions set forth. Above that are required to be satisfied prior to issuance of the building permit for the facility. And be it further resolved that this site plan approval shall be valid for a period of one year from the date it is issued. Unless the applicant applies in writing to the planning board for a one year extension, at least thirty days prior to the initial expiration period. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the Town of Canton Town Clerk. Within five days of the date of this resolution and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five day period. And then we have to sign this one.
The only question I had was on the trees, they only have to inspect the trees for the first five years.
Yeah. That's been all of them, I believe. If they make five years.
They should be.
They're good. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Yes.
I'll second. All in favor? I. Opposed? Once again, we get to sign. You want me to use this one, Mike?
One paper in there.
What's that? I, I, I do, I, I changed it on mine.
I think for unofficial.
Those things that your company is agreeing to, the group last night agreed to provide their firstborn child.
Last night, they said they would return him.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said.
Well, the one in Nashville is very expensive, so all you can ever hear.
You in college?
No, out of college.
Bill, did you see that board of confidence from Ian?
Yeah, I figured, I. Did you hear a couple of things in there to answer questions that you and some of the other people had about? Turns, bombs, glare, semi annual inspections by B and L.
You just said that these trees make it five years, they're good. My experience on my land, that's when they start to die, spruce trees. Deer wheel leaves spruce trees, I've watched them do it, and spruce trees will die. I mean, that years under their belt does not mean they're gonna, they're good to go.
Five years, their chances are a lot better than they were. And I mean, there's nothing.
No guarantee on anything.
I'm surprised they didn't have to continue to replace them, no, it's them.
After the five. That's what they've all been now.
I'm surprised we didn't notice that before.
Like I said, I wish they could start planting them now.
Right, that's me.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah. A bunch of them. A lot of solar plants.
Yeah.
A lot of them.
Yeah, no. No, goats. Need everything that old Tim can.
They'll be out.
I own, I own goats for four years.
Sheep yesterday. Love you.
I'm working upward, we, we. We're making progress, uh, under new business, last night we talked briefly about scheduling future meetings. Did we wanna make a decision on that tonight? I'm gonna toss out just as an idea for Monday of every month. The first Monday evening of every month.
I'm fine with that.
Um, let me make sure it doesn't conflict with other. Are we ready that we're just like. As of yesterday, there was no new status, so on three ten.
We could always.
I mean, I'm.
Like, I cannot do February six. Which would be the first Monday, February.
The second Monday of holiday.
The thirteenth? It is not, it's the twentieth.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
You guys did a good job.
Yeah, thank you, board members. Thanks for coming up to see us.
The only thing before you do leave on that resolution, and you, I think you said it earlier in the. Meeting that you might not get to it until twenty twenty four. That one year.
That one year with the thirty day extension thing.
And he read that, I.
I thought the same thing.
Right.
We, we can. You know, you've got time.
And, and it said you could apply for an extension.
You know, more than thirty days before this one expires.
This one expires one year from today.
When you write that, and you said twenty twenty four, I'm like.
Right.
Right. So don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Equipment is very difficult to. Secure. Yeah, tired world.
Well, uh, yeah, no, I brought in some similar issues. I did have a, like, a question about equipment. Now, are they tracked, hired? I mean. The, the installation, the drivers. As far as compaction goes, you know.
Right. It, it, it depends on the EPC and, and what equipment's available to them at the time that they own it, then they know what they're gonna be using, but sometimes they rent it.
Okay.
So we don't have that contractor. The contractor.
Not gonna get this out of this project yet, so.
All right, that's fair.
Is, she can't make it first Monday next month, is the second Monday?
Other than that, I'm good on the first Mondays.
I mean.
We don't even have anything.
Like I said, we don't have to do, we don't.
We don't have to. But we were talking about having a.
Something scheduled.
It's like the first Monday of February is only, what, two weeks from yesterday?
Yeah.
Do we need to keep Kayla in her office for this conversation?
No, she's good, thank you.
She's.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mike will be in contact when you guys need me again, so.
Thank you, Kayla.
There's semi annual inspections, do they let you come out in the field to do that?
I, I mean, I hope so.
You'd come up and see us all.
Yeah, exactly.
They'll come up for all the calm inspection.
But then she. Walk doors and walk around.
Any sort of, uh, you know, insurance liability or something that bars us from. I mean, are there any, any sort of, uh, you know, insurance liability or something that bars us from? From observing something like that? Well. Okay, okay, I'd be interested to see what something like that looked like.
Oh, the inspection, yeah, yeah. Well, it's a ways away at this point.
No, I understand, but I'm just.
Well, we got a stick of them going, so.
I know, but there's none of them that have put a solar panel in the ground, you know.
It will be.
So this, this year, year thing that we were just talking about, what? They, is, is, they have to start the project within a year?
Yes.
And what constitutes starting a project?
I believe it's exactly getting the permit, right? Getting the actual permit.
And then how long, how long is the permit good for? Another year?
Another year.
Oh, so they got all kinds of time.
It's not a problem.
The stuff they gotta go through just to get the permit?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I mean, you got emails, I sent you emails, I got today from a project we issued. In. June. Or no, to August. So it's not.
Yeah. Well, you're off the hook, Kayla.
All right, well, as always, it's been a pleasure. Um, thank you guys for all your great work, doing a great job.
Thanks, Kayla.
Thank you.
Me too.
Have a good night.
Well done.
I mean, you guys don't.
Grazing sheep.
For me, all I'm looking for like more than that. Hypothetically, I'm looking for. A date, or not a date, I'm looking for a day that if someone calls.
There's some potential, but the fix runs.
Six o'clock, first minutes of the month.
Okay.
That's what you know, I mean, we don't have to meet next, I'm just saying, if you guys are comfortable with the first Monday of the month.
Sure.
It has me, it gives me, somebody calls off.
Normally that works for me, it's just in February.
Write it down, kiddo.
Written already.
Okay.
First Monday of the month.
First Monday of the month, six o'clock.
But we're probably not gonna have a meeting anymore.
But we're not gonna have a meeting.
Which is a six, then.
The sixth, and I can't do the sixth anyway.
Officially saying that the sixth is not happening, but the first Monday of the month is the plan.
Unless, unless something weird.
Wrestler Falls Village Board meeting.
Oh, I knew it was something, but I couldn't see it.
So potentially then the first one would be the sixth of March then.
Yes, but like Tom just said, it does con- it does conflict with the Rensselaer Falls. Board meeting, I don't know if that matters.
Are you, are you?
I'm not involved, buddy.
None of us.
I don't think anybody.
It prevents Tom coming and covering our business.
I've missed a few of those.
It does.
Gonna meet every month.
Theoretically affects.
Only thing we have, hypothetically, the only thing we have now, now is to finish three ten. Which.
Which is on indefinite hold.
Which is on hold until they do their certification.
Right.
And is to redo the meat roach's resolution if they ever. Come back, I mean, right now. It's approved with the resolution that we did, if they don't accept it.
And, and, and my understanding is it's, it's comments and wording.
Oh, it's awful.
Their nitpicking is essentially.
Well.
And no way Bill talked about.
And if we approve what they are, what they want.
Right.
It real, it starts the clock again.
So, well, and he said what the grounds that they're gonna file anything is that Article seventy eight or whatever number goes arbitrary and precious, which he said would be a tough sell anyway with that process. So.
But, well, I don't want, I don't wanna give them a second chance on anything.
No. No, say to them.
Yeah.
Are there, is there any other new business?
The only, the only other new business, uh. I was contacted today by the Judson Street Solar Developer. I sent it to Kayla and I sent it to Ian, um, and they wanted to, instead of doing a. Um. Chain link fence. Around the site, they would rather install an agricultural fence.
Would say.
But, yeah, okay, with the bigger holes.
Down.
It's kind of upside down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
And put it to the ground?
What's that mean?
And put it to the ground?
No.
They, well, they wanted it to the ground, but.
Why, why are they proposing that?
They just think it'd be more agricultural for the animals and stuff instead of chain link, so things can get through.
Cause why wouldn't you put that?
It's just the way.
Then the holes are bigger.
Oh, I gotcha, yep, yep, okay.
Put it to the ground.
Yep.
But they're gonna keep the six inch reveal.
Yep, okay.
From the ground.
I gotcha.
And the bottom holes are gonna be eight by twelve. Which an animal, a lot.
That may do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Which a lot of animals could go through.
Right. But I don't think, I've never seen, you're talking about like the red barn.
I was talking about more like page wire upside down.
Right. Those are, those are four by fours.
Yeah, these are.
This, this, it's bigger at the bottom and they get closer together as you go up.
Right.
Sure.
That's what they were originally gonna do behind you too.
Yeah. And, uh. So they've agreed to raise it to six inches.
Eight by twelve isn't a problem for the children, is it?
Like that.
Uh. It would be wrong.
I love it, I mean, those spaces, can they get through that?
It's just.
They'd have to be pretty small.
I don't think those, those aren't.
They're weird looking, it's a weird looking.
No, I know, uh, like, but I've never seen anything that's like eight by twelves, like squares, yeah.
These are much taller fences than where you.
Say if it's OSHA approved, I'm all right.
I said, I.
Too bad they can't do that.
Well, I said it to.
Although I guess they'd be able to get through there.
That's.
Kayla said it was okay.
Kayla said it was okay, as long as they kept the six inch.
I'm okay with it. Was there one of the other projects wanting to use that style too?
Yeah, I forget.
Thought it was the one behind you and then they were gonna flip it.
I forget what.
Well, I suspect roll fencing is. A lot cheaper than chain link.
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's, um.
It's pretty expensive, yeah.
Are they gonna use for poles?
Chain link gets really.
They use metal poles.
Yeah.
No.
But I mean, what diameter? Were they gonna use this, you know, the T post ones, you know, they put in. I know they're not T posts, but I'm just saying that the only way that I've ever seen those. Either stapled to a wooden post or you put the, the. The wire around and wrap it around the fence on a T post. I've never seen something that. Is U shaped, I'm sure they make it, but.
Didn't that thing show that they were gonna use four by four pressure treated?
Yeah, I think so.
Posts, so they get, they'd staple them.
Yeah. Yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, by the way, Dakota said that he approves, he supports the move to a regularly scheduled monthly meeting.
Yeah.
It's just not.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Man.
Good job.
Monday, except maybe next month.
No, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, we're looking at March.
What I wrote down is if we had to have one in February, maybe February thirteenth would be appropriate. Unless, but the, at this point, we don't really need it, so.
Don't have any.
So.
Without seeing you guys.
I don't know about you guys, but you know, this whole thing is almost.
Yeah.
The end.